We'll get started here in just a moment when we make sure everything's online and up and running. Ready, ready to go. All right. Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, and it is 6:00 P. M. What we'll do this evening to start off with, I'll bring the meeting to order, and then we'll, we'll, after I have brought the meeting to order, we will do the pledge of leeches, and Harrison Hall is going to lead us in the pledge.
I am the United States of America, and I am a true believer in the religion of one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just for all.
Thank you, Harrison. Roll call by the city clerk.
Doug Glasbo.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum. J. David Reed. Anthony Russo.
Here.
Harrison Hall.
Here.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the, or do we have any changes or deletions, additions?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
All right. The next item is a small business proclamation, and Kendall, if you would please come up. This is a proclamation for small businesses, Small Business Saturday, November 27th, 2021, where as the City of Montrose celebrates our local small business and contributes, the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. Whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in our United States, 88% of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small business in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of the Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them will encourage friends and families to do so. And whereas 56% of shoppers report they support online with small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of the consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at local business because of social media recommendations. And whereas the City of Montrose supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, we now, the City Council of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 22nd, 27th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday. In the City of Montrose, and in your, in urgent presence of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And witness herof, I do, here under my, set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of Montrose the 16th day of November 2021. Kendall, would you care to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. We'd encourage all, everybody in our community to shop local on Small Business Saturday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and don't forget to come out and get your Montrose bucks. The Montrose bucks promotion sale will begin that day as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
The next item on our agenda this evening is call for public comment of non-agenda items. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action can be taken on matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city operations. Please be aware that neither the city council nor staff are expected to respond or engage in discussions in the debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personal unemployment matters and use of profanity, ethnic or racial or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited. As is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local laws shall not be permitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the council this evening? If not, I will go on to the next agenda item. That is number seven, consent agenda, city council consideration of meetings. Minutes of November 1st special meeting and November 2nd regular city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Next item is the 2022 budget approval. It's an ordinance of 2567 on second reading. The city council consideration of ordinance 2567, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing and appropriating funds for defraying expenses and liabilities of the City of Col, Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022. Our financial director, Shani Wittenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. This ordinance 2567 is before you tonight on second reading. No changes have been made from first reading to second. So with that, I will entertain any questions you have, or if you would like me to go through some of the items, I can do that as well.
All right, does anyone have any questions? We've been over it several times in work sessions, and appreciate the efforts you guys put into this. How about a resolution? I consider resolution 2021 dash 24. Do we have to adopt that? Yeah, undoubtedly not. In that case, is there any public comment anyone would care to make on the budget? All right. Then I will consider a motion on ordinance 2567 on second reading and consider a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 24 as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2567 on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2021 dash 24 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is item nine, ordinance 2570 on the first reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2570 on the first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending ordinance 2514, which appropriated funds for defraying the expense and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning in January 1st, 2021. Set expenditures of the City of Montrose over and above those anticipated at the time of the adoption for the original budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021. And our financial director, Shani Wittenberg.
Thank you again, and I'm going to share my screen with you for a brief moment. So ordinance 2570 is before you tonight. This is a routine housekeeping measure that we do every year throughout the year. And from basically when we set the budget in October of the previous year, any items that come up that didn't make the budget or grants that we applied for that we did not receive were not in the original budget. So this ordinance actually just supplements items that we didn't know about in 2020 that happened in 2021. The only change I have is to that first line item for retail sales enhancement. It goes from 515,000 to 523,000 as a proposed. We talked about this yesterday in the work session, and so that change will be made to the ordinance. And that retail sales enhancement, the increase for that is basically for items that we didn't know about. We added a new employee in the DART area to cover some of our functions in RSE and to promote small businesses effectively. The second line item there is a CDBG pass-through grant, and that's actually for our school district, the Centennial Middle School Play Yard was a grant that was applied for a couple of years ago, and they're finally going to finish that piece of it. We're going to ask for that remaining monies. Once they provide all the documentation, we'll send the school district that 175,000. And then the Montrose Urban Renewal Authority is the third line item there. This is incentives for horizontal improvements, and I added it to your suggestion, such as water, sewer, storm sewer, sidewalks, those types of improvements that we're making out in the URA area that was a few years ago just vacant agricultural ground. So that's just improving that area. And then the debt service, that's just an oversight during our budget process for 2021. We didn't budget for the fees for the loan and the certificate of participations that we issued. The Black Canyon Golf Course, after we adopted the budget, we could not find a restaurateur to run the restaurant. So the city opened a restaurant, January 2021. A lot of hard work and dedication from the staff, that 255,000 covers those expenditures for 2021. And then trash and recycling, as a lot of people probably already know, it's hard to get vehicles right now. It's really hard to get those big vehicles like trash and recycle trucks. Usually it takes about nine months to get, and we're seeing like an 18-month lead time on them. So this truck was actually ordered in 2019, I think. We received it in 2021. So we just need to appropriate those funds again for that trash truck. And then the Health and Dental Management Fund, this is due to unexpected claims. That's our self-insurance fund, and we're just making sure we can cover everything with the allocated budget. So with that being said, there were several items during the 2021 year that came before you all, and you approved them as the year went through. And unfortunately, well, I shouldn't say that. Fortunately, we don't need, we don't think we need to supplement the general fund budget, but that's where those items came out of, such as the asbestos abatement in mobile home parks, the La Raza Park improvements, several property purchases that we made throughout the year, those types of things. I didn't want those to go unnoticed, just because we weren't going to increase the budget for those. So with that, are there any additional questions from yesterday or anything you all would like to, need to explain?
Council questions?
I do want to just reiterate what we did discuss in the work session. When it came to that extra 3.5 million, that that was money for improvements that over time we would have made, but due to the fact that we had a litany of projects that came out this year that were unexpected due to just the extreme growth of Montrose, that's where that came from. I just want to make sure that gets on the record.
And also just to reiterate for the public that this is not an unusual process. This is a yearly process, that rather than bringing items one by one by one before the council to approve them, that we just kind of stack them all up and do a supplemental budget at the end of the year. So this is something that we do annually. It's nothing unusual.
Barbara?
I'll say we did approve these one by one, but we didn't appropriate the money. So that's the part we're doing now is appropriating the money for the budget. And no, I don't have any other questions.
All right, I will open a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak to the budget information?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance.
Let me go ahead and close this.
Okay, you got it. I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance 2570 on first reading as amended to reflect an amount of 523,000 in the retail sales enhancement fund for the budget as a final number.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Our next item is a new hotel and restaurant liquor license application. And Stephen Alcorn, I believe you're going to conduct this one, Chris?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Before city council is an application for a new.
Could you move the mic over just a little bit?
My apologies. Much better. Before the city council is an application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Buen Sabor Mexican Restaurant located at 82 Rose Lane for consumption on premises. For the, for this application, neighborhood has been defined as the City of Montrose. This is a public hearing for the new hotel and restaurant liquor license, and is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood defined as the city are not currently being met by existing facilities, and the indult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. The permit is in order, and fees have been paid. From the city staff's review of the application, we have seen nothing that would prevent the council from issuing a license, notwithstanding this hearing. This council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer decision for up to 30 days. At this time, I'd like the applicant to step forward and introduce themselves to the city council and announce their home address for the record now.
Good evening. Hey, my name is Olga Chavez. My address is 1031 6442 Road, Montrose. Business address is 82 Rose Lane, Montrose, Colorado. And yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want the counselor, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point? Or do you wish me to ask some of the preliminary questions we frequently ask?
All right, well, we ask a few questions, and we'll get back with you then. David? All right, Chris, if you would.
Thank you. Is it your intention to draw customers from throughout the City of Montrose?
I'm sorry, what?
Or do you plan on drawing a crowd from the actual City of Montrose to your restaurant? Yes?
Yes, I do.
This is why we've determined the neighborhood for these hearings to be the actual city. Do you object to this determination at all?
No.
Do you think the neighborhood is in need of your establishment?
Well, there's a lot of business going on, you know, so there's, there used to be another restaurant there, and we're just trying to make another restaurant, so I'm pretty sure there's some people that like to go eat and have a drink with their meal.
Absolutely. Do you think there is a desire on behalf of the inhabitants of the neighborhood for your establishment?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, I don't think there should be any.
So that is, do you think the people around your restaurant want to see your restaurant there? Are they excited?
Oh, I have heard good things about, you know, being there. The new local people were sad that the other place closed, and I have had good comments, people coming in and said, hey, we're glad you opened, and so we're glad to be here. And yeah, I think everybody, it's happy, you know, that there's another, that there's going to be another restaurant.
Yeah, actually, we do have some comments that were received from the public. Some of them were stated that you have amazing people. Please allow liquor, as it gives a great atmosphere. It would be nice to have a drink with dinner. Muy bien, good job. And girls have fun. These are direct quotes.
Right, yeah.
Additionally, there were 82 signatures submitted. Forty-two of the signatures were determined to be insufficient, as 33 were outside of the city limits. Nine provided insufficient addresses. Four failed to provide a signature, but 36 signatures were determined to be valid and in support of the license. And those comments did come from those 36 signatures. The City of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of the State of Colorado. Would you please describe your familiarity with those laws?
Yeah, I've been working on the restaurant business for 21 years. I started pretty young. Actually, I worked at this place for 21 years. I mean, I was just pretty familiar, familiar with the laws, and I took the liquor class at the beginning of the month. So, oh, that's all I can say. I'm pretty sure I know most of the, most of the rules and how to be with, around with people and take care of people when they're a little bit intoxicated, and yeah.
In any of your previous liquor license businesses, have you been accused of failure to operate under any of the state or local liquor license laws?
No.
Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in Montrose area?
Yes.
If so, will you please describe your understanding of the task force?
Yeah, well, can I tell you the story? When I worked at my old job, I know we had an underage, underage kid come in and ask for a drink, and he just sat at the bar and asked for a drink while I asked for his A.D. He's like, well, I don't have my A.D., you know, and I was like, well, I'm sorry, no A.D., no drink. And he's just went out the door, and I saw a vehicle outside. I immediately, I knew the, you know, there was, it was just an undercover underage trying to get liquor from a restaurant.
Now, you said that you've taken the liquor law education server training class.
Yes, at the beginning of the month. Yeah, I think it was November 1st.
Do you understand that it is the city's intention that all licensees in the City of Montrose and their servers attend this training?
Yeah.
We do take it so seriously. I am actually going to be taking it myself. I haven't yet. But would, you would, excuse me. Would you be willing to commit to the council that if your license is granted, that you as licensee managers and all servers attend such training within 30 days of issuance of the license?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, do you have any other questions?
All right, Barbara?
Can you tell us a little bit about your restaurant? How long have you been open, and what kind of drinks are you planning to serve?
Okay, we've been on the open, we opened on November 5th, so it hasn't been that long. We're still kind of new at the new place, but we're going to be serving margaritas, beer, piña coladas, just the normal, regular stuff that you could drink in a restaurant, family restaurant.
And since it is a family restaurant, I think it's really important to council, so I'll kind of ask you the same question he already asked. But can you make sure that you don't serve kids who are underage, please?
Yes, that's our goal, you know, and like I said, I've been working for 21 years in the restaurant business. And I mean, it's pretty obvious when it's an underage. They don't want menu, they don't want chips and salsa, or they don't want anything, they just want a drink. If they don't show their A.D., there is no drink, you know? That's how, that's how I do it, so, yeah. And like I said, I have had about three, three times that has happened to me. And actually, one of them, the kid said, well, hey, good job, you know, I'm just an underage trying to buy liquor, and you passed. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
No other questions from me, thank you.
Very good. One question I would have, if you have several people at a table and you have younger underage people there, do you have a way to monitor those, or you keep an eye on it so that somebody is not sharing a drink with them?
I usually keep eye on them, you know, with the adults drinking and not, you know, passing it like under the table or just over to them. I always try to keep eye on them, just to make sure they're not drinking. And I don't, and I don't get in trouble, so, which that's our, not to get in trouble.
Do you also watch, make sure that someone is not over-served?
Yes, yeah. If they're over-served, we usually just say, you know, I think it's time to, you know, take it down or maybe offer some food or something so that way they won't go out and drive or have someone come and pick them up, or, yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? If not, I'll open up to a hearing, so the hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of or against this liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am? Please come up to the front, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Alisa Lopez. I live at 69905 Highway 5013 in Montrose. And first of all, I just want to say Olga is very nervous right now. Yeah. And we actually, I know the family for many years. They have been, they have worked so hard to come where they're at as of now. They have tried so hard, and I am so happy to see them make it. I have spoke with them, I sat down with them, and I ask them actually the same questions. I personally don't drink. I am the designated driver for everyone. And we went to the grand opening, we had dinner, there was about 12 of us. And when we were done, everybody wants to have a drink for dinner. So we ended up jumping to Mimi Go, because there was no drink, there was no drinks at her restaurant. And I did ask them, I said, how would you guys, like, how do you, how are you guys going to check if there's, you know, somebody sitting here that's 21 and over, and this one's not, and they're sharing? How are you going to watch that? What are you going to do? And the first thing that Olga had spoke to me, she said, our waitresses are at the tables all the time. They're not going to have time to do that. And I thought that was a great observation and a great answer for them, because they have come such a long way. I think liquor is, DUIs is so important to me. That's why I quit drinking 25 years ago. I, I just, I don't mind everybody drinking, but I just, for the, for their part, I just wanted to say that it would be nice to have a liquor license in their restaurant. I live towards East Main. Mimi Go is just one Mexican restaurant. We would like to have another one that's nearby that you can have a drink Friday night. I know we all go to karaoke, we all do things, we all, we would love to have their restaurant to have a liquor license, so everybody can have a drink there. And it's just something that I truly believe that they are going to be very observant in everything they do with this liquor license.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Brandy Romero. I live at 151 Montrose Drive. I'm part of the group, and she is my D.D. all the time. But we were, when we were there for the grand opening, it was amazing. The food was great, the servers were awesome. They were at the table every five minutes checking on us, see if we needed anything. So I think, you know, if they had a liquor license, it would be easier for all of us just to sit there and have a good time, because we always get together on the weekends, friends, and hang out after work and just kind of just relax and rewind, and it would be really nice for them to have that liquor license there.
Thank you.
Awesome restaurant. They got great food. They do, they do.
Is there anyone else that would care to speak? If not, all right, thank you. We'll close the hearing. I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a hotel and restaurant liquor license at 82 Rose Lane for El Buen Sabor Mexican Restaurant.
Do I have a second there? I have a motion, a second, please vote.
Congratulations.
That passes unanimously. Good luck. Good luck. Item number 11 is an ordinance 2568 on second reading. City council consideration of an ordinance 2568 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, repealing Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 26, Pron 6-1-26, only regarding loitering. Assistant Staff Attorney Matthew Aglaro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public present via Zoom. Here on a proposal at second reading to repeal one discrete provision. Here are a proposal at second reading to repeal one discrete provision in criminal ordinances six dash one dash twenty-six for loitering. What is sought is outright repeal, striking all language in that section of the code. There's no replacement ordinance language. The only word would be reserved to indicate the slot is open for future use. This was presented as a discussion item at a recorded work session held October eighteenth and at first reading held November second. Clean version appears on pages forty-four through forty-five of the session packet. There are no changes between what was presented at the work session, the first reading and now. And with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions?
So, my question is just, we're basically taking this whole section out of our code because it no longer does what we needed to do and things are covered under other parts of our code.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
All right, anyone else? Does anyone would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-five sixty-eight on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. That pass, excuse me, that passes unanimously. Number twelve is ordinance twenty-five seventy-one on first reading. City Council consideration of ordinance twenty-five seventy-one on first reading, an ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, amending the city council district boundaries by the adoption of a new council district map and by the insertion of the official code of the city of Montrose and repeal the old council district map. Staff, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Glassell. This topic was discussed at two previous work sessions. As was brought up at those two occasions, the charter requires that after every census that the city council district boundaries are adjusted so that the populations in all four districts are approximately equal. On November first, six options were presented to city council and we are requesting an ordinance adopting, not adopting, selecting one of the six options presented as Exhibit A to that ordinance and approval on first reading.
All right. Counsel, any questions? In that case, I will open a hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who would care to comment on the. Seeing none, I will close the hearing. And I would consider a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty-five seventy-one on first reading with option number seven designated within Exhibit A as the new district boundaries.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion on that? None? Then I would ask us to vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item is a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five. City Council Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one twenty-five authorizing the filing of a DOLA planning grant application for housing needs assessment and approving a matching contribution equal to forty percent of the grant request to seventy-six thousand dollars and directing the city manager or staff to execute the grant agreement. Breeze?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. So, yeah, I come before you today for your consideration of the filing of the grant application with Colorado Department of Local Affairs for the planning grant program for a housing needs assessment. So, there was three grant programs that were created under the Department of Local Affairs to help local governments better understand their housing needs and adopt the policy and regulatory strategies in order to promote the development of affordable housing here in Colorado. And so, our planning department has identified three regulatory strategies that will be implemented upon a successful grant award. So, the first strategy is implementing the creation of an expedited development review process for affordable housing. The second is establishing a high-density housing bonus program to increase the construction of units that need critical housing needs in the local community. And the third strategy is lessening the minimum parking requirements for new affordable housing developments. So, grant funds will be used to hire a contractor to assist with housing needs assessment and to assist with code amendments and ideas for implementing the three strategies that I just mentioned. The total estimated cost of this project is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. A twenty-five percent match of the grant funds is required for this grant and per your request from last council work session, I did inquire with DOLA about going above and beyond our matching rent requirements and DOLA did agree that an increase in matching funds will show an increase in political support, which is actually a scoring criteria on the application. So, the resolution before you has been updated to show the increase in matching funds from twenty-five percent to forty percent. So, the city would be providing a matching contribution of up to seventy-six thousand dollars. And so, we are seeking a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from DOLA. So, the resolution before you allows for the filing of the grant application with DOLA and directs the city manager and staff to perform all necessary steps to execute a grant agreement. Additionally, the resolution commits the city to provide up to seventy-six thousand dollars in matching funds. That is all, if you can take any questions.
Any questions, council? Anyone that, I'll take public comment, is there anyone in the audience who would care to comment on this? All right, seeing none, then I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five as presented.
Second, I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item fourteen. You folks that were here for the liquor hearing, if you would like to leave, you certainly may. No, you can stay. We charge the same amount either way.
I'm going to leave the cooking for you, Mayor. Yeah.
Thank you. Item fourteen is a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. City Council consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, the resolution authorizing the filing of the United States Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Grant Cleanup Program. Application amount is five hundred thousand dollars. Approving a matching contribution equal to twenty percent of the grant requested up to a hundred thousand. Authorizing the city manager to execute the grant and authorizing city staff to act on behalf of the grant agreement. Project Manager Kendall Kramer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, city council. Yes, before you tonight is a resolution considering authorizing filing a grant application with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for a Brownfield cleanup grant for the former Bullock Power Plant. Cleanup grants provide funding for eligible entities to carry out cleanup activities at Brownfield sites. An applicant must own the site for which it is requesting funding. Applicants may apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars and yes, there is a twenty percent matching requirement to that. The city recently purchased the Bullock Power Plant, Lot B, which is located at thirty West South Fourth Street, also a historical address of three twenty-six South Water Avenue. It is a five-point-five-four acre site with river frontage and we seek a grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to address environmental conditions on the property and to encourage revitalization and redevelopment of this site. A little bit of background information on the site. The city did assess the property in twenty-fourteen and twenty-seventeen under our existing U.S. EPA Brownfield Assessment Grants. One that we still have open to twenty-seventeen, we actually updated the Phase One report before we purchased the property. Prior to its development in nineteen fifty as a power plant, the property was a forested grassy area along the riverway. And the plant was originally called the Montrose Steam Electric Plant until it later changed to the James A. Bullock Steam Electric, S.E., plant. It was a coal-fired plant for most of its existence from nineteen fifty-two until nineteen eighty-two and then it was converted over to natural gas. In nineteen eighty-four, the plant was placed on standby and since then it has been remained idle and became vacant. The former plant is constructed of concrete and steel. It stands five stories tall with approximately forty-three hundred square foot footprint. The primarily, primary remedial areas under this grant would be addressing asbestos and lead-based paint as well as the presence of fly ash on the property. Prior to nineteen seventy-seven, fly ash was just left on the property until EPA changed regulations and required it to be moved off-site beginning in nineteen seventy-seven. The treatment approach under this grant, if we were to receive it, based on the Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments that we've completed, we would be conducting asbestos and lead-based paint survey to understand the full scope of the asbestos and lead-based paint in the system or in the building, excuse me. We will then abate that asbestos and lead-based paint, lead-based paint, do targeted or limited soil removal. Depending on what the future use of this site will be, will depend on the extent of that soil removal. And then additional groundwater monitoring well, groundwater monitoring. There's already some existing monitoring wells that we're going to do some additional sampling on to determine levels, to see if there's any arsenic or other heavy metals in that water. Potential reuses of the site. So, we, cleaning up the property does align with the goals and objectives of our plans here at the city, including our twenty-forty comprehensive plan as well as the twenty-eleven Uncompagré Riverway Master Plan. We've already done a lot of work along the river, so it kind of goes along with that. We've also, it extends the work that we're doing along the West Main Street corridor that we just received the grant from C.D.O. And so, there's ways that it could be tied into that to really revitalize the area. And of course, again, on the river, it's a very important element to our community, offering outdoor recreation opportunities. So, there's opportunities for that as well. Additionally, adjacent to the property is the Montrose County School District's new outdoor learning experience called Outer Range. I had the opportunity to go out there yesterday and tour that site. Really cool if you've not been out there, I know they have an upcoming groundbreaking for that, but, our opening. So, there are ways that it could be tied into that to teach children about the history of energy development, really, or energy use. Again, we plan to leverage this, this grant to continue the work in that area. Possible ideas that were developed or came about during a visioning process in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen with the community were indoor climbing gym, expanding riverfront access, possible commercial uses such as retail and restaurants. There were some conceptual drawings that were done with a rooftop patio with a potential brewery. So, there's a lot of different opportunities for this site. It's likely to be a combination of both public and private uses. Again, the goal is twofold for the cleanup of this property. It's to address the environmental conditions to the benefit of our natural resources as well as to encourage revitalization of the property and eliminate an attractive nuisance in a blighted area. Cleanup will eventually lead to additional river access and may serve as a catalyst for further redevelopment in this area. Once again, in conclusion, you have a resolution before you tonight to file the grant application with the U.S. EPA, which is due on December first. We've been working with Ayers Associates on this application since it is of a technical nature. The resolution also commits a twenty percent match of up to one hundred thousand dollars to the grant, authorizes the city manager and staff to act on behalf of the grant. And once again, the application is due on December first. So, if you have any questions, I can take those now. Thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions? We'd also accept any public comment, if somebody would like to comment on this. I see none. In that case, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five as presented.
I think it's twenty-six.
Twenty-six, excuse me, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. The American Rescue Plan Act, potential projects for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Counsel consideration a list of potential projects for the American Rescue Plan. Staff, city manager, Bill Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As discussed at a previous work session, the community came together and gave the city some ideas on how we could potentially use our American Rescue Plan dollars this year and next year. And at the work session, we had these same items presented to the city council with the promise that we'd bring it back to a formal council meeting for consideration with updated numbers. And so, this document that's included in the packet outlines the various projects and has dollars associated with those projects. And I would ask tonight just for a vote to give us the ability to move the projects forward to make sure that we're working along the same lines that city council would like us to work with representatives from the community who have worked with us as staff. And I can answer any questions about any of those projects or I can read each one, whatever.
It might be good to at least discuss a few of them, if you would.
Sure. So, we'll just start at the top one and work our way down. And if you have any questions, just throw it out and I can explain as we go along. So, we've talked recently about some of our mobile home parks and the importance of cleaning those up. There's a lot of dilapidated mobile homes. And the three parks that we've been lucky enough to come across a private group of investors who want to clean up three parks and our assistant city manager and staff worked really hard with those groups. Counsel previously approved partnering with them to do that. And so, part of this is three hundred and seventy-five thousand to work on providing safe water and sewer systems for the residents of those three parks. Goes along with what was mentioned earlier, asbestos mitigation in those same mobile home parks. The next item is to support early childcare or childhood daycare access project. So, we've had a variety of partners in the community doing studies and talking about the need for increased access to childcare in our community to get really working mothers back to work. The cost of childcare right now, or the lack of access to childcare, is really causing a problem for us out in the workforce. And so, there's a couple of different items. The first one on here is four hundred and seventy-five thousand to assist in creation of approximately seventy new daycare slots in the Colorado outdoors area. And then the second item is in conjunction with a previously funded study that the city and county came together with a nonprofit entity to do some study in this area. And we've been asked to reserve some money. Hundred thousand dollars of the one hundred and fifty is to go toward the implementation of what was found in the study, the needs. They're not quite to the point where they can give you all of the details of exactly how they would spend that hundred thousand, but they are looking forward to coming and presenting to city council with their exact plan. But they asked me if I would drop it in here and at least get it reserved so we didn't have other projects take up those funds. And then fifty thousand of the one fifty would be for the expansion and new programming to help in-home childcare, the expansion of that in our community. So, we don't know what that looks like quite yet. Councilmember Bynum and I talked about it recently and there's some efforts out in the community to make that happen. So, we wanted to put fifty in here as a placeholder as well. So, you have more details to come on those. The Recreation District Satellite Site Location Project, seventy-five thousand dollars to assist the Montrose Recreation District, working with Colorado Outdoors to establish a satellite location on the north side of town to serve the residents of the north part of Montrose. We knew all along when the rec center was created, it's on the south end of town and there would be some potential access issues on the north side. And so, rec district representatives have been working with Colorado Outdoors and the childcare facility that's going into Colorado Outdoors where the new recreation satellite location could serve the entire community in the mornings or in the evenings, but during the day, it could serve as a recreation outlet for the childcare location. So, some toddler play mats and those types of things and create a lot of synergy in the Flex Building over at Colorado Outdoors. If we remember, we were approached by the Montrose Rec- If we remember, we were approached by the Montrose Rec District asking if we would be willing to use some of our ARP funds to backfill their lost revenue. And we decided we didn't want to do that type of project, but we would love to partner with the Recreation District on any new projects to serve the community. So that's where this one came, came about in our discussions. The next one is $750,000 towards sanitary sewer infrastructure installation out at Simiron Creek Manufactured Home Community. And this is really, one of the main driving forces behind ARP monies is water and sewer infrastructure, as well as broadband. And so a lot of the things on here are water and sewer related. So Simiron Creek is a really important manufactured home community in Montrose. It allows, it allows entry-level housing for not only senior retirees that come to our community, but young families and young professionals who are just starting out. And the Simiron Creek area needed an expansion to their sewer systems in order to bring new homes online, and that's what this one is talking about. And it will actually, it would help us get new, over 100 new home sites. The next one is multifamily workforce rental, housing, construction, water and sewer infrastructure. This one we've talked about at length at both the council and the URA Board. $515,000 toward the sanitary sewer and water infrastructure installation to support the base camp apartments, which is 96 units of workforce market rate housing. That is, the construction has started already out there. We had the civil construction on the horizontal site improvements and the city side of the infrastructure. And this would, would go to help with our utility side of things for, for that project. Any questions?
Any questions?
I do have some questions really quick for you, Bill. The, the first one is, I know that during some of our work sessions and our dialogue, there were some concerns of what would be covered, what wouldn't be covered. Have we got any direction from the feds as far as what they are allowing and not allowing? Since all of this money is coming from the federal side, which is great for us.
Yeah, that keeps Kendall very busy. Between Kendall and Shaney and other staff members, it's a, it's a moving target. But I, we've been checking in with each other on a regular basis. Right now, there's a very black and white. Some of you have been on calls as well, I've been on calls. There's a black and white element to the ARP monies that clearly states water, sewer, and broadband are eligible expenses. So that's why you see a lot of the water and sewer on here. When it gets into the gray areas is where we get a little nervous. And so we're, we're waiting on more definitive definition to come from the feds. Because with CARES Act money, it was very similar. They passed CARES Act funding with the rules and everything to come later. A lot of people spent the money, because we all get excited about projects, and then they fine-tune it later, and you find that some things were in that gray area. And so we're being very conservative, although we're also being assertive, because we want to really take advantage of those monies and make projects happen in our community. And so the worst-case scenario is we fund some of these, but these are, and then we have to pay it back later to our general fund or to our water and sewer fund, or something like that. They're projects we would do anyway, so it's just a different pot of money. So I think the risk is pretty minimal.
Anything else?
I would kind of support that. A lot of these are projects we've had a lot of discussion about. And most of these are ones that council has a lot of input on already, and we've already discussed them in great depth. And as Bill said, we would do them anyway. Most everything on here is something that we, we, we really want to be involved with. And this is just an opportunity to use other people's money. But that gives us also a little bit of flexibility on utilizing some of our funding to backfill other projects. So it opens up a few doors for us.
And I think the list is very reflective of the direction council has asked staff to go with supporting housing needs in our community and early childhood education in our community, and that the infrastructure needed for both of those, because ultimately it helps drive our economy. Thank you.
Any other questions? I would take comments from the public if anyone has anything. Not seeing anything. I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the list of potential projects for ARPA funding for the 2021, 2022 as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 16 is the Grace Community Church Edition 2 Annexation. And that's going to be presented by Amy Sharp, Senior Planner.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So this is the third time this has come before you. We presented it at work session and also council resolution to set a hearing date. So I'm not going to share the full presentation, but just give a brief overview. This is an annexation of a property that's located along Woodgate Road, and it's just north of the current Grace Community Church. The property is currently surrounded by city limits, so it does meet all of our annexation policies as well. They are requesting an R3 medium-density zoning district, which is compatible with the current zoning in the surrounding area. And churches are allowed as a use-by-right in this zoning district. The only update from the last time I gave this presentation is that on October 27th, the Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of R3 at that meeting. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions? I would accept public comment if anyone in the public would like care to comment on it. Seeing none. I would ask for a resolution on 2021-27.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2021 dash, I lost my page, I'm looking at it on my computer and here, sorry. That we adopt Resolution 2021-27, Findings of Fact for the Grace Community Church Annexation 2, Addition 2.
All right. Second. I have a second on that, please vote on that.
And you want me to do part two?
Yes.
And the second part of any annexation. I move that we pass Ordinance 2572 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that also.
All right, I have a motion, a second, please vote. And those pass unanimously. Thank you. Next item is Ordinance 2573 on first reading. Council consideration of Ordinance 2573 on first reading in ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the Grace Community Church Edition 2 as R3 medium-density. Amy, do you have anything else to add to that?
Nothing further on this one.
I'll hold a hearing on that, and we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone that would care to comment on that? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. And I'll take a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance 2573 on first reading as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item we have is Riverbend RV Park Travel Home Park Permit. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Right, so this one is... Speaker. This one is the Riverbend RV Park. Many of you know where this is located, but it's along Chappeta Road and just north of Chappeta Lake. And they have requested that we give them a travel home park permit because they're wanting to expand their services in their park to include more opportunities within that park. This one just gives you an overview of where that site's located. The next slide is their site plan. So this one is one that had to go through Planning Commission for a couple different things. So they had to get a conditional use permit and a variance for several different things. Specifically, any new development that requires a building permit or site development has to abide by the Uncompagre River Buffer Zone. So part of this property is located within that zone. And so one of the conditions they needed was a conditional use permit to allow gravel parking within the outer zone of the URBC. And then they also needed a variance, which would allow buildings within the streamside zone of the URBC, and then gravels, roads, just within the RV park as a whole. So those items are just approved by the Planning Commission. It's just important to note them here, because they will be attached to the travel home park permit. So the things that you see within this site plan, you'll see some different buildings, some different parking, and things like that, that do fall within that URBC zone. And those items were all approved by Planning Commission at the last meeting. They also approved the travel home park permit, which gives them the ability to make these improvements to the Riverbend RV Park. And then it comes before you as well tonight to give the final approval for that travel home park permit. This basically just gives the sections of our code of how this applies. I kind of went over this already. And then you guys, as I mentioned, will give the final approval for the travel home park permit tonight. Staff does find that the proposed use met all the criteria for the variances, the conditional use permit, and that the site plan for the travel home park permit also meets all the requirements of our code, except for the criteria for which the conditional use permit and variances are requested. So within the travel home park permit itself, those conditional use permit and variances will apply in order for them to get the travel home park permit. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Anthony, you have anything?
Yeah, with them going to a travel park permit, that actually means that there's stricter rules on, on maintenance and taking care of it, correct, than, than previously?
They did already have a use permit. It was a little bit different, because it was back in December of 2009, so regulations were a little bit different at the time. So the travel home park permit basically means that the park would have to be expanded per this site plan that you see before you tonight. They don't have to do all of it at once, obviously, but it gives them the opportunity to make these changes per the site plan.
So are you saying without this permit, they wouldn't be allowed to make changes on their site and adjust things and add and, and move gravel around?
Correct, they would just have to leave it as is, basically. They still have a use permit, they can still operate, but they could not make these additional changes. And I can note some of those, I mean, it's in your staff report, but they're wanting to do some new sites for RVs, cabins, and yurts along the river. They're wanting to put potentially some safari tents up in that northwest corner, and then some more RV cabin and yurt sites on the west side of the property as well. So it basically brings about a lot more opportunities to bring RV and camping to the community, which I know is something that we talked about too in the comprehensive plan. I heard a lot of people talking about glamping in that comprehensive plan, and this kind of fits that need too.
And these kinds of things, if they're short-term, if someone's there for a weekend or for just three weeks, or they would be paying a lodging tax, correct?
Yes.
You can see our finance director nodding yes, that the lodging tax applies to these short-term rental.
Anything, anything under a month, even a tent on a RV spot, okay.
Amy, since this is located right along the river, are there any flood conditions that they have to meet? Or because it is a temporary thing, does that allow them to?
Those were discussed during their site plan review. So our, Scott Murphy was one of them, you know, that weighed in on those items to just figure out whether or not all those issues were addressed or not as part of their initial site plan. So we went through several iterations to address those needs as well. I don't think he has anything else to add, I was just looking back at him. But yeah, we address those issues when we're going through the review of their site plan.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, counsel? I would accept public comment if there's anyone that would care to comment on it. Seeing none, I will bring it back here to the council and ask for a motion.
Everybody's hesitating, because it's a lot of words in this one. I would move to approve the travel home park permit for Riverbend RV Park as detailed in the staff report with the associated conditions and variance approvals. This request meets the code criteria and standards based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item we have is item 19, it's an ordinance on second reading. And we have one of our council members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from participation in discussion and action on item 19, as well as item 21, which are somewhat related. I do believe that I have a conflict on item 21 due to my representation of Stryker and Company and Mr. Stryker. I do not believe I have technically a conflict on item 19, Ordinance 2569. And I've consulted with the city's legal counsel, who concurs with my conclusion, but I think out of, out of abundance of caution. I did participate on the first reading and vote on, voted on that. And again, I do not see a conflict, but because of the relation of the two items, I am going to recuse myself. As well as 21.
All right, thank you, David. You will return, right?
I have to go to the coffee shop to get in.
I've already been passed for a coffee.
All right, item 19 is an ordinance of 2569. It's on second reading, the Montrose, Colorado, mending the zoning designation of portion of parcel number 3767-202-00907 from Public District to B3 General Commercial District. Amy Sharp.
Thank you once again, Mayor and City Council. So this one is located at the north end of Air Parkway. It's technically addressed as 2365 Air Parkway. This property is currently zoned as P Public District, and we are requesting to rezone just a portion of this parcel, which is approximately 1.3 acres in size. So we'd like to reason this to B3 General Commercial District for potential development of some businesses, or a business, rather. And then we would retain this small triangle in the lower corner as P Public District, so that we still have access to the rivers that take out at that point. Here's the official zoning map, so this has been updated. Just minor changes and edits with technical, or not technical errors, but spelling errors and different things like that from the last time you saw it. But in general, it's the same one that you saw during the first reading. This just talks about our rezone criteria, which I know you guys are all familiar with, so I won't read that in detail. This shows just a brief picture of it, so it's at the end of the cul-de-sac, as I mentioned, there on Air Parkway. It's listed as the public in our future land use map. And staff does find that this proposal meets our rezone criteria and the intent of the B3 General District, Commercial District. It is in compliance with our comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this on October 27th. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Counsel, any questions on it?
Yes, Amy, just to be clear, this rezoning doesn't impinge or limit any of the public access to the river corridor?
That's correct.
I would point out that there is parking by, in the cul-de-sac at this location and along the street for access to the river corridor also.
Correct.
And that P designation, that piece that is designated as public, does that adjoin additional public lands that the city owns? Or is that separate from the other part that the city owns right next to it?
I might have to look at the map to look more specifically at that, for sure. Okay. Take me just a moment to pull that up.
Because it's just a very tiny little triangle, but I thought part of the reason that that made sense is because it was right next to additional...
Looking at the map, the way that it's currently designated, that all we're doing is that we're retaining that area that's all public, so it adjoins it on all sides.
Yours came up faster than mine, I just have a circle spinning.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, that whole piece of land next to the little triangle to the south of it is owned by the city of Montrose.
Yeah, and all along the river, to the west and south.
Any other questions? I'll accept public comment, or is there one that would care to speak on this? Please come forward and state your name and your address.
My name is Melanie Reese, I live at 3036 Lost Creek Road North here in Montrose. Moved here about five years ago from the Goodison Valley. Thank you very much for having me, allowing me this opportunity. Since moving here... Since moving here, I've really come to love the river corridor and use it frequently. I get back to the river corridor last May with the city as one of the six sponsors, mobilized 74 volunteers to clean up a mile and a half of the river corridor. I'd like to say I support this rezoning. I think it is really appropriate to take this parcel from public use to commercial use. It will provide, it's appropriate for this location in the business park. It'll enable a land exchange that will provide public benefit with additional land at the park at Chapita, and it provides a site for valuable Montrose business. So I really applaud the city staff's efforts to do this and your decision thus far. My concern is parking. I do kayak the river weekly from early May till late September, very fortunate in that. And I have witnessed that there is really an increase in utilization of the town run, particularly after the river improvements last year, which provided increasing fishing habitat. So we see not only recreational kayakers like myself, but the people coming down in fishing rafts. And so at times, it's gotten very congested at that takeout, and parking has been very limited, because as you well know, we're often pulling trailers that are hauling our boats around. So the cul-de-sac is, has an adequate radius. We've enjoyed being able to just turn around there and load up our boats. But we look at this site, and we say, well, to access this parcel, the new building and the parking lot's going to take up more of this cul-de-sac. We've increasingly had to park along the street. But when you're trying to pull in with trailers, you know, and the parking's going to be increasing with the new business located there and their vehicles, some of which are pretty substantial trucks, that's going to become more tricky. So what I'm here to request with, as a result of this concern, is that you make sure there is land provided for additional parking, and that you go ahead and plan that for at some point down the road, so that we don't lose the opportunity to really access this takeout fully.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I know that we've had some discussion on this, and I believe that the developer has said that they will be parking all of their vehicles on the property itself, so I don't think that would be an additional problem.
I just wanted to make a comment that this is actually, this is just the rezone, so this would actually be for number 21 on the agenda, just to make that clear.
Oh, okay. Are there any comments on the... Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2569 on second reading as presented.
Have a motion, could I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. I was going to ask if it would be possible to make item 21 next, and then we could come back. But since he's...
Send him away, though.
Yeah, since he's here, we'll go ahead. Our next item is item 20, Woods Crossing Subdivision filing number one, final plat. Amy Sharp, would you like to cover this for us, please?
Sure. So this project is the final plat for Woods Crossing Subdivision filing number one, as you mentioned. This one is located over off of Sunnyside Road and Hill Street, so it's, the extension of Hill Street is going to go kind of right through the middle of this subdivision. As you can see here, this one is approximately 73 acres in size, just under, and they're proposing 127 residential lots as part of this filing. It is zoned R2 low-density district on the east side, and then R3A medium-high-density on the west side of Hill Street. Hill Street's going to go right through the middle of where you see those two zoning changes. For our final plat, all lots must meet the minimum lot size as required by our zoning regulations, so that's one of the things that we check for on the final plat. All of the streets must also be in place and approved by the city engineer. I know they're really close to getting that done, and Scott can speak to that if you have any questions. And same thing with the utilities. All the easements must be shown on the final plat. The city water mains, sewer and utilities must also be installed. This one's probably pretty fresh in your memory, because we did the preliminary plat earlier this year, so I won't go into a whole lot of detail on it, because I'm sure it's pretty fresh in your memory. This is just the plat itself, so these are all the signature lines, the details on the lots. Then this is the portion that is going to be completed as part of filing number one. So as you can see, it's on both the east and west side of the new Hill Street expansion or extension, and it's on the southern portion of the lot here. With this, staff recommends the conditional approval that we place on all final plats, so I would just ask that if you approve of this one, that you please use this condition in your motion. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions, council? I would accept public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to comment on this? We see none, we have nothing online. In that case, I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we approve the Woods Crossing Subdivision filing number one, final plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
And a second? Second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. David, were you going to...
Mr. Mayor, per my previous statement, I'll recuse myself from this item also.
Could you hurry a little? All right. Item 21 is a land exchange and development agreement with Stryker and Company and city manager Bill Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As discussed at previous meetings, we are recommending the implementation of a development agreement with Stryker and Company to do a land swap. The city owns the piece of property that was just rezoned and down by Tabalatch and that area along the river. It was an underutilized piece of property there. It's behind the county public works facility. It's in the industrial park area, and rather than just sit there empty, Scott Stryker and I thought that it would be put to better use to help the expansion of local business. And Scott's here tonight to answer any questions as well from his side of things. So the idea was, we would give Scott the property that we had, and he had some property along Chapita Road next to Chapita Lake. As you're driving along the lake, working your way north along Chapita Road, it's on the right-hand side. If anybody's driven in that area, it has been cleaned up quite a bit, thanks to Scott, and would allow us eventually to widen Chapita Road in that area and make it much safer, which has been discussed at length over the last year to year and a half, talking about the hub project and future expansion of Chapita Road, the addition of the intersection down where Chapita comes out near the Yoot Museum. So it just fits into our long-term plans to take this underutilized piece of property, put it to a better commercial use, get property for us that would aid in our ability to expand Chapita Road, and maybe do some additional access to Chapita Lake from the property as well. So there's a lot of win-wins with this particular project. It's outlined in the packet. We've talked about it previously, so I would turn it over to you. If you have any questions for me or Scott Stryker, we can answer anything. Scott Murphy's also here and has some...
And I think one of the things we wanted, we discussed early on, too, is they will clean all the property up for us, so we'll be getting it free and clean of any downtimbers.
Yeah, both of us are cleaning up our properties. We'll work together on that to make sure that neither party's taken advantage of, and we work as a great team anyway. We partner on a lot of projects, so that's all outlined in the agreement, what the city was going to be doing and what Stryker would be doing.
Any comments?
Yeah, I think, you know, when we first went over it, I did have some hesitation, just giving up property that close to the water with river access. But I think after we had some really good discussion around some of the issues with that property, just it became a dumping ground, it was not necessarily always safe, I think that this is a really good move to clean it up and then put a good-looking business in a really ideal spot for it. So I appreciate the hard work you guys put together, or put in to put this together.
I have a question Mr. Stryker could possibly answer. In relationship to the question concerning parking, if you could offer some clarity on vision for the parking of your trucks and so on on the parcel they're going to be working on?
Can you repeat that?
In response to the question we had earlier, if we could kind of have a little bit of a...
Yeah.
If you could explain a little bit about what your parking idea is?
Yeah, so a part of that packet you might have seen...
Would you please state your name and your address?
I'm sorry, Scott Stryker, 688 Spring Creek Road in Montrose. And so the intent in that packet was to have all the parking for the employees and staff and any construction equipment that we might have there would be on the property itself. So we would anticipate using the cul-de-sac for any additional parking even. And we have a company of 23 employees, and with this expansion, it could go to 30, but you know, a big portion of those will be superintendents and field guys. It's not just office staff, so we have an office staff of eight right now. So that would probably go to probably 12 or 13. And so all off-site parking would be there. The cul-de-sac would be used once in a while if we had to, you know, use the cul-de-sac to unload a forklift or something once in a while that would come back. That happens about once a month. And so while I hear her concern, I know that there's probably a middle ground to be able to reach out to them. I'm a rafter, fly fisherman, so I enjoy what they enjoy, and so I can appreciate what she's saying. And I think there is an opportunity at the end of that cul-de-sac near where that public P portion, that triangle, would offer a relief if we needed to do a shoulder there to be able to get a boat and a truck, trailer off the side. The lion's share of the Aviant trucks that come in are used in the back of the facility of those two, I call it the Gordon Composites Campus. And then the employees would tend to use the road, but it's not, it's not a lot of traffic down there. But her concern is valid as far as, you know, is there going to be any issues with people? And it's Montrose roads, it's probably something we could look forward to in the future, but it's not an interstate highway down there, but there is some traffic that, she has a valid point, so.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess I would like to just say at this point that it's, I agree with Mr. Bell that it is a win-win, and this is an opportunity for Stryker 2.0 to be able to expand and to continue its work here. I kind of said in the city work session that we're a regional contractor. About 55% of our, 60% of our work is not actually in Montrose or even Montrose County. It's in Delta or Gunnison or Uray Counties, and so we look forward to continuing to be able to base right here and grow, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. I would open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would care to comment in the public hearing? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Bill Glasscock. I'm a resident of Montrose 126 Ridgrass Court and co-founder of Montrose Surf and Cycle, formerly known as Montrose Kayak and Surf. As a part of the boating community and the future growth of our boating community, we, of course, support this land exchange at all fronts as a benefit for the community. As a representative of our boating community, I just want to encourage that we don't just look at the traffic that has been there, but that we consider the growth of the traffic that will undoubtedly increase. And some of the reasons for that increase is that of kayaking and rafting, fishing, vehicles with trailers, is because with climate change and shrinking snow packs, regional and outlying river basins, river seasons are becoming shorter. And with our unique situation of the Gunnison Tunnel water, we have, even in low-water years, an extended season here that attracts a lot of river surfers and rafters and kayaks to help support our economic base here, through the restaurants, buying groceries, fuel, all those good examples. So to improve the access, to maybe go a little bigger than originally thought to help plan for the potential future growth, it will put us in the lead with a lot of cities around the country that it demonstrated with great success that by embracing their river, the quality of life improves for the community and everybody involved. So I think we just got to, my main point is to keep looking towards that future growth that is potentially going to be coming here, as I'm going to help continue to promote There is a great example, if you guys have the opportunity, YouTube search "Kayaking the Uncompagre River, Montrose, Colorado, the Town Run." It's a nice little presentation put together by Dana Hollister, and it really helps to showcase what a unique jewel that we have with our town run.
We have about 30 seconds left to finish up.
Okay, yeah, just that we have this video really helps showcase and help people understand what a unique jewel we have here. So, thank you for your time and all you do.
Thank you. Any comments?
Question. Bill, just with the property that we have there that's still Zone P that we'll own, is it possible to, in the future, expand parking there for boats and pullout?
Really, it hasn't been brought up as a discussion point until just recently, when we received some emails. So I would, just looking at the map, there's quite a bit of ground there, so there's probably some, something we can look at if the need arises. And Bill didn't mention it, but he was on our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for quite a while, representing the business, and now we have another representative of their business. So he's provided really good input on our park system, especially representing the users of the river. And so I would, I would say we would need to bring that up at our Parks and Natural Resources Committee and talk about that very thing, and the opportunities, maybe go do a site visit and talk about that as we move forward and plan our parks capital projects in the next couple of years.
Thank you.
We might have, you have one other person out here would like to speak.
Yes, my name is Ray Jansen, resident of Montrose, 712 South Ninth, and I'd just like to echo the concerns of the previous commenters who are friends and avid rafters. We boat that river two or three times a week in the summer. And there are times I have a trailer, pull a truck, or pull a trailer with my truck, and there are times when, when parking is being utilized in that cul-de-sac, it becomes very difficult to turn the truck around in that cul-de-sac. And if that river, if that takeout is utilized on a regular basis, it's going to become difficult to get in there and get around and pick up a boat. And so I just want council to consider that when they do this land approval, and because there, parking could definitely become a problem down there.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak today? If not, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back up here. Barbara, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we could keep an eye on it in terms of parking in that cul-de-sac, because it is important to be able to turn around with a trailer if you're loading a raft or kayaks. And also possibly even have a loading zone there that allowed for temporary parking right at the takeout, so that even if you have to park down the street, that you can come back and feel comfortable parking there while you go down and you deflate, or you pack up your gear to bring it up. So I think there's possibilities that we could look at as that continues to see more use in that cul-de-sac. use in that cul-de-sac.
I'd say looking at the map, looking at our overview maps that, and the one that we have pulled up on the screen right now, that it would be interesting to look at some of the available land down there to create a specific parking area. That's something perhaps we can start looking at and considering.
Right, we might be able to do something like we did along the park at Hillcrest where we created parking spaces that are parallel to the road, that are off the road. I, we just-
I think there's a lot of options.
Yeah, and we should keep them open.
Your comments?
Yeah, with the amount of property we have there, we could also probably look at even putting in some gravel, gravel parking off that street too.
I would hate to promise anything at the moment without having Jim Shatter, Public Works Manager, who's nodding in the back, going and looking at it. I would, I think the best spot would be our committee and I would invite anybody interested, give us your contact info, shoot us an email and we'll hold a committee meeting and invite you and we can have that discussion, maybe go do the site visit with all interested parties and then we can decide what we can do.
Right, and in full transparency to our process, then what happens is then it comes up during our big picture budget talks next spring, that's something that committee might want to see, and then we work on it all year and it gets approved for the following year. So I think in, along with the idea of not overpromising, we're not suggesting that we're going to go down this weekend and do all this, that sometimes government moves a little bit slowly, but it's definitely something we can look at through that committee.
If you don't want to make Jim's head explode.
All right. I've closed the hearing, is there any other discussion? Any comments from staff? All right, in that case, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the memorandum of agreement, development agreement with Stryker and Company as presented.
All right, I have a motion, you've got to have a second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. That passes unanimously with one abstention.
The, Mr. Mayor, I'm talking to Councilor Reed. He realized that the next item is disposal ordinance that's directly related to everything that Councilor Reed just recused on, so he asked me to announce that he's going to recuse on 22 to be consistent with his earlier recusals.
All right, thank you. In that case, ordinance 2574 on first reading, City Council consideration of 2574, and that's the disposal of real property, Lot 1, Air Park Way, Minor Subdivision, and that's going to be Senior Staff Planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council once again. So this is all in your packet, so I won't share my screen on this one, and Bill has already explained all of it in pretty great detail. And this is kind of the last piece to the whole puzzle. So we did the rezone, the development agreement, we also have completed the, well, I could say the plat for the minor subdivision is also done, it has not been recorded yet, that will be recorded after tonight, because the rezone had to happen first. But the disposal ordinance will now help us to give that Lot 1 of the minor subdivision to Scott Stryker through a special warranty deed. So we did have a quitclaim deed in the pack up before and it's going to be changed to a special warranty deed instead, but otherwise, we're just exchanging that parcel for the 1.2 acre parcel along Chapita Road. There's no monetary exchange because they're equal acreage, one's 1.3, 1.2. And with that, I'll just open it up to any questions.
All right, any questions? I'll open a hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and I'll take a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2574 on first reading as presented.
Second?
Second.
That passes unanimously with one absent. That concludes the vote, he's buying dinner tonight. Next item on our agenda is item number 23, the hub at Montrose Crossing Development Agreement. This is City Council consideration of development agreement between the City of Montrose and the 1890 Homestead LLC for the hub at Montrose Crossing. Bill, Bill?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this also is something we've talked about quite a bit, as outlined in the packet, there's a lot of details in there and we've covered those at previous meetings, but we'll definitely be here to answer any questions on it. The developer is here as well, Scott Murphy, our city engineer who helped do most of the actual staff memo in here and did a lot of the calculations on the infrastructure side of things is here as well to answer questions. But just for the community's benefit, this is talking about the market rate apartment housing complex called the Hub near Cobble Creek. We originally talked about this at a council work session, August 31st, 2020, and at that time, we were talking about Mr. Miles' project and how the city might be able to help with approximately $2.3 million of infrastructure support, very similar to how we've supported other housing projects or economic development, business expansion type projects over the past 10 years here in the community. At that time, the proposal that went to Planning Commission and to the, to staff for consideration and discussion, it was a little different project back then, it was a grander scope, included more units and had a broader impact. And so that's where the 2.3 million of infrastructure incentives was discussed, but now it's been changed to 160 units. It's about 83% of what the scope was previously when we considered the 2.3 million. And so in your packet, you see a revised amount, a reduced amount of incentives in the way of infrastructure support to be about 83% of what we had offered before. That's kind of a summary of it, answer any questions at all you might have.
To reiterate, none of this money goes directly to Mr. Miles, this is all to pay for infrastructure and things that we would normally go in and do the work for, paying contractors, correct?
Yeah, usually how we do this is we try to put our money directly to contractors to do the infrastructure work. Scott Murphy, our city engineer, monitors those projects to make sure that they're built up to city specs and make sure that we follow all the processes necessary and standard practice for a city. And then we make sure we partner with the developer and their construction team just to make sure that all those specs are met and we operate in the fashion that we're accustomed to here. Thankfully, we have a great city engineer and his team who work really hand-in-hand every day with our contracting community, construction community and our developers. And so I, I'm very comfortable knowing that we're in good hands with that team to make sure that what Mr. Miles is saying he's going to build as far as infrastructure is going to be built.
Any questions, Council?
Just a couple of points for clarification and Scott Murphy may want to jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong, but two things, I understand that this proposed contribution to the project would be for water and sewer mains, no service lines or anything of that nature, so that further development of this property in the future would have been served by the construction of these main lines, is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, so generally, there's a couple of different categories within the breakdown of the, what gets us to the 1.77 million or so. Some of that are fee waivers, some of that are capacity fees associated with water and sewer, which are pretty typical development type incentives. One of those is the water and sewer infrastructure. So unlike some of the URA stuff where you're going into parking lots and different types of infrastructure, this is solely reimbursing water and sewer, primarily main lines, I'd say about 80%, it's probably main lines that end up becoming city infrastructure. So any subdivision, any kind of major development like this, they construct the main lines as city main lines to city specs, they don't own them, they don't own any capacity in them, they are city lines for the community's benefit. So if, as future development occurs in the area, that can be tied into and support future development, whether it's him or others in that general area, so, so yeah, you're correct in saying that.
So in effect, we're investing in our own project because we're going to own the lines?
Correct, yeah, yep.
All right.
I would just like to look at the big picture for a second, and that is, not only in Montrose and Colorado, but across the country, we're seeing a shortage of housing and a shortage is driving up prices. And so continually I've heard from folks that they want the city to do something about it. Well, the city isn't going to control rents, the city isn't going to build apartments. So what, what tools do we have in our toolbox to use to try and affect the levers of housing in our community? And I think one thing is working with a developer who wants to come along and build a multifamily housing project and that we can, like you said, spend money on the sewers, lines that are going to be ours in the end anyway, and we can help make a development happen that might not have happened otherwise because that infrastructure isn't there. And that is something that we can use, a tool that we do have in our toolbox to try and affect housing. And hopefully we see as an increase in housing is brought on in our community, we'll see some price stabilization, because I know it's really affecting folks that are being displaced because their rent's going up or who can't buy into a starter home. So I hope this is something we can do to affect housing.
If I might follow up on that, I totally agree with, with what you have said, Barbara, and I, I think it's important to note that I have many comments from citizens, both pro and con relative to the city's investment in this project. And I certainly understand those citizens who call into question the use of public funds for infrastructure that serves a private development. But these things are not unusual, they're not uncommon, they're not new. It happens all across the country today and particularly in this era of the pandemic, et cetera. And so I, I took it upon myself to really study this issue and convince myself that it is the right thing to do, because we are using the public's money. And so we have to look at what is the benefit to the entire city and to our citizens. And I was struck by one thing as I was doing my research and reading, and I would like to just take two minutes to read this into the record, because it really brought home what I think we're attempting to accomplish here. And this is an article I'd be glad to share, but just a brief part of it. "There are unfortunately inaccurate stigmas that surround affordable housing, making it a primarily misunderstood topic by the public. We often see negative sentiments on property values and changes it will bring to neighborhoods dominate discussions on bringing more housing options to communities. In reality, the lack of housing can be devastating for communities in numerous ways, such as driving out residents and losing potential workers, teachers, firefighters, service workers, local business owners, et cetera. Besides failing to step up with adequate housing can discourage growth in local economies, which we need now more than ever before in light of the ongoing pandemic. These myths and misconceptions need to be proactively dispelled by local government officials by emphasizing how vital housing can boost the economy." So I, to me, that sends a message, and I think that's what we're attempting to accomplish here, is to provide for the entire community, something positive for the entire community. And we, you know, this is not, in my opinion, we, we are, we are not investing in the profits of the developer, we're investing in the future of our community. And that's where I see the need to proceed as proposed. And I think that, I think we've all spent a lot of time considering this and I, I come down on the side that it's the right thing and the proper thing for us to do.
Any other comments? Any public comments? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Stan Gregg and I live at 3756 Grand Mesa Drive. I am the chairman of the HOA Hub Committee and we ask that you consider our request tonight. The hub is now being developed under a use-by-right minor subdivision plan. Early in the year, when it was before the Planning Commission hearings, it was a planned unit development. Mr. Miles at that time stated that no construction vehicles, equipment, or workers' vehicles would be parked along 6450 Road or Cobble Drive during the construction of the hub at Montrose Crossing. We are asking that this requirement be added to the city's development agreement with 1890 Homestead LLC under number 6A, Statement of Work and Understanding of Performance, which you are considering tonight. There is also concern about all the construction vehicle being allowed to enter the hub site along Chapita coming into the main entrance to Cobble Creek at Cobble Drive. I have previously asked the city council during, with emails, to ask the developer to require all of his work vehicles to enter the construction site using the entrance off of 6450, using the intersection where it meets Cob, Chapita Road. And it was pointed out that by the city or the mayor and a couple of other people that this intersection was not adequate for large, long and oversized construction vehicles. We are asking, we are requesting that the city ask the developer to direct construction traffic that can access this intersection, to use it to access 6450 and the entrance to his site along 6450 if vehicles can access and use and negotiate that intersection. By doing so, this is an attempt to reduce the construction traffic along Cobble Drive, coming in the entrance, the main entrance, and at the intersection of Cobble Drive and 6450. It needs to be understood that not only do over 400 residents live in Cobble Creek, but there's also a business there with the tavern, the club of Cobble Creek and the golf course. And most of those people probably come in the main entrance. So the less construction traffic that can be directed away from that main entrance, the more we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions? Do we have anyone else who would care to comment on this item? No one online? Council, do you have any comments? Staff, any comments? In that case, then I would take a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the development agreement between the City of Montrose and 1890 Homestead LLC for the hub at Montrose Crossing as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Next item is item number 24. Any staff reports today? Bill?
I do have a couple. The sales and use tax report.
The sales and use tax report that's on the agenda, I would like to share with you. Once I get it up here. We continue to collect, sales and use tax is coming in strong again for this third quarter, so September of 2020 compared to year-to-date, I'm sorry, September 2021 compared to year-to-date 2020. Lost a year there for a second. So the City General Fund collects 3% of the sales tax. In September compared to September of 2020, retail sales tax is up 12.4%. Construction use tax is actually down 36.4% for the month of September. Use and auto use tax up 23.1%, total collections of 11.6%, with a positive budget variance of 12.1%. Year-to-date collections for retail sales taxes up 20.1% or about $2.6 million. Construction use tax up 21.7% or $104,000. Use and auto use tax is also up 21.7%. We've double, triple, quadruple checked that number. It's amazing how it's the same. But they both are 21.7% for year-to-date, or 207,000 extra has been collected in use and auto use tax. Total collections up 20.2% or approximately $2.9 million through September. Budget variance is positive at 28% or $3.8 million more has been collected. Public safety, sales, and use tax, this is a voter-approved 0.58% that's been added to the sales tax. In September, we collected approximately four, actually, we did collect 404,949, or 12.4% more than we did in September of 2020. Year-to-date, our collections are right at $3.4 million, 24.2% more year-to-date through September, or $672,000. Positive budget variance of 36.5% or $921,000. The Montrose Recreation District Tax, this was also voter-approved, adds 0.3% to our sales tax rate. And in September, we collected 209,452 or 11.1% more than we did in September of 2020. Year-to-date collections of $1,751,045 or 21.2% more than we did through September of 2020. Excise taxes, we add 0.9% for hotel and 0.8% for restaurant taxes to our sales and use tax. In September, hotel excise tax is up 14.7%, restaurant excise tax up 12.4%, total collections up 13% or positive budget variance for September of 12%. Year-to-date collections, hotel excise tax up 51.5% or $39,000. Restaurant excise tax up 23.8% or $82,000, with total excise tax up 28.9% or $121,000 more has been collected through September for excise taxes. The positive budget variance of 31.3%. We're very, very conservative with the excise tax projections for 2021 just because of 2020, or an additional 128,000 has been collected that what we budgeted. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that they give to the city for promoting retail sales in Montrose. And in September, we collected $50,606 or 13% more than we did in September of 2020. Year-to-date collections, $410,403 or 21.4% more through September. Equates to $72,000 in additional revenue. With that, I'll take any questions or comments you all may have.
Any questions? All right, anything else?
I can just give you an update on the third quarter, so through September of 2021. The budget review is in your packet and I'm pleased to announce that everything looks great. Our revenues are coming in higher than our expenditures, so we're in very good shape.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anthony, any questions? Thank you very much, Annie. Any other staff reports, anybody would, any comments you'd like to make today?
Kendall's going to come up and tell you all about our holiday event schedules.
Thank you, Mayor. Also have Lisa Kuzmerski's coming up as well to present on holiday activities. I'm going to talk about Small Business Saturday, which is coming up on November 27th. So we encourage all of our community to go out and shop local. Our holiday promotion for Montrose Bucks will be back. The promotion starts on that Saturday from 10 to 4 here at the Montrose Visitor Center. For every $50 that you purchase in Montrose Bucks, you get an additional $10. You can purchase up to $400, which gets you $480 in Montrose Bucks. There's a limit, one per household, so we'd encourage folks to come out. It is cash-only sales, so keep that in mind. And a photo ID is required with your address on it to purchase during the promotional event. So we'd encourage everyone to come out to the holiday promotion, get your Montrose Bucks, shop local. And Lisa's going to talk all about our other holiday events that are coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Would you like to?
Kendall, before you jump off, a quick question. What is included in Shop Local? Who will actually take the Montrose Bucks? I think that's important to know.
Thank you, very good question. So we have an updated list of 90 businesses that participate in the Montrose Bucks program. So they are throughout the entire community, not just downtown. But we'd encourage you to shop locally with your mom-and-pop stores. But yes, there are 90 businesses. We're adding them. Bree has been out in the community this week, adding a few more. The Montrose Recreation District actually just added Montrose Bucks Budget Blinds. And there's another one, I believe the new paint shop on West Main Street just joined it. So we're getting them quite frequently, so the list is growing.
Is there a place that citizens can find that list?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I had a career in radio before this, so.
There's more.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Speaking of Kendall's history in radio, we recently had he and Kaylee go and do our radio spots. So we will be having lots more publicity going out on all of our events coming up for the holidays. And that's just one piece of it. We also do a lot of print advertising with the Daily Press and social media blasting too. So all of this information has already started at the beginning of November. And you'll see more and more of it coming up in the next couple of weeks. So with that said, we have several things going on. Our tree lighting is going to be the first event that we will be holding. It's on the 26th of November at 5:30. It will be just like in past years, right here at the courthouse with a lot of people from both city and county participating. We've got the Montrose High School Choir that will be singing as well as Maslow Academy children. So that should be exciting. And I hear that Santa will be in town and able to light our tree that evening. So please come and join us then. Our second event also that night and into the next few weeks will be our showcase of Santa's cabin in our new location for Santa's mailbox. And Santa's mailbox is going to be put on his cabin, so it's not a disjointed thing for people anymore. The cabin will be located on the Hartman Lot here right on Main Street. And it will be facing Main Street so that people can come park there, hop out, take a peek into the cabin, leave their letter for Santa, and then those will get picked up by the elves every day. So the cabin will not have Santa present this year just due to COVID. But we just wanted to make sure that our new cabin is out there for people to see and enjoy. They can peek in the window. It'll be decorated and festive. And again, a place for the mailbox to be where it'll be nice. So that starts on the 26th as well. And then Small Business Saturday is on the 27th, like Kendall had explained in our Montrose Bucks program. And then the Parade of Lights will be held on the 4th of December. Again, like as in past years, we will be having a judged this year. We already have 30 entries and we have two more weeks to go before we cut that off. So we're looking at probably another 30 we're anticipating. So it should be a nice big parade this year. Our route will be mimicking as years pass. So we will be off of Nevada all the way up through North Ninth Street with our staging. And we've been working very closely with both Public Works and the Police Department to make all those plans happen. So if you've got any other questions, I'm definitely here to help answer.
Where is the review stand located?
That will be actually on the intersection of Uncompagre, so in Maine. So we won't be blocking any businesses at all. It'll take up the street section. And that's where you all as council can join us on that stage to help judge.
Thank you so much for giving us that overview. And all of that information is on the city's website under Holiday Events. Do you think that we could put a link from the Visit Montrose page, like a real prominent, so folks who go to visitmontrose.org can see a link to the holiday page specifically?
Absolutely.
That'd be awesome. There's so many fun things going on. I know folks are really looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to say thank you to our Public Works team. They've been out the last couple of weeks already. You might have noticed the holiday lights on Townsend and on Main Street. And so things are starting to look really nice as well as City Hall. So they'll be lit up here before long. But thanks to Public Works, Jackie and Jim and their team for getting that done for us.
Any other comments?
Thank you, guys. Looking great.
Thanks.
Any other staff with comments? Harrison?
Good evening, everyone. So our Montrose Youth City Council, we are currently bringing back the Rock the Rec events, where we rent out our rec center one night for our youth. And typically, we have different themes that we do, different activities to engage our youth and basically get them off their phones, get them off social media, engage them a little bit. Unfortunately, this year, we weren't able to get a hold of the rec center due to staffing, but we were able to get a hold of the field house. And this year's theme is neon colors. And the different activities we will have is dodgeball and murder mystery. And then we are also trying to partner with Rotary Interacts Club to do an event for the Christmas parade or other activities. And that is what we are currently working on. Any questions?
David, do you have a comment?
All right, great. Harrison, you have a retreat coming up as well, right?
I believe we do, so with you guys. So I'm not sure really what the date is yet. We've discussed it, unfortunately, 29th. So yeah, that's our retreat. And then I believe we're having that at the Bridges. So I'm looking forward to seeing you guys there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ann, anything?
No, no updates for me. Thank you.
Stephen, anything additional?
No, sir.
Bill? How about council, any comments?
I actually do have a comment, but I would like to thank our Public Works for the hard work they do on picking up the leaves. We are doing that program again. It's going to be until December 3rd? 10th, December 10th. If, maybe you just, have you come up and explain it a little bit?
Dave, how many bags of leaves did you bag up over the weekend?
I had 92 bags of leaves. They had to make three trips.
So speaking of that, how many bags do you think we picked up on the first day?
How many bags total?
Yep.
92 of Dave's.
6,000.
2,000 on the first day. So yeah, the event started, or the collection started this week and it'll run through December 10th. And yeah, we keep track close to how many bags. A little bit of a competition to see who collects most bags during the day within Public Works. So I would kind of enjoy it and we'll see if we beat last year's total. So far, we're definitely on pace to have more bags. I don't know if there's more leaves this year or maybe people are just bagging them up. I don't know. But we've collected a lot of leaves already, so.
How do you dispose of those?
We actually give them away to a lot of the local farmers in the area. They use it for tillage in all their fields around here. So if they're close to town, we will deliver the leaves to some of the farms or we allow them to come pick them up. Or even just residents, if they'd like to put them in their garden or other things, we will give them away. And we actually do, are able to give all of them away every year. If we don't give them away, we have to pay to have them composted, so.
We kind of prefer them to have them on the curb in a clear bag?
Right, yep, on the curb, not in the alleyway. So in some residences, their trash is collected in the alley. But for leaves, we'd like them out on the curb so that we can pick them up on the street side. And we prefer clear bags.
And because those are reused, I would imagine that it really needs to be leaves. It can't also be grass clippings and some limbs and some other stuff.
And trash, yeah, we would, leaves only, please.
We would be mean to the farmers to give them a bag of trash.
That's right, yes.
And we do have clear bags for sale at City Hall. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's right, we do. And in Public Works as well.
She didn't pay attention to it all.
I think they're 25 cents each too.
Yeah, a dollar for four, yep.
I did have a quick comment, just in reference to, you know, one of the things we discussed today with DOLA and the housing assessment. I just wanted to, we didn't make many comments about that, but I just wanted to say that when we went through the comprehensive plan and a lot of the things that we do here as we try to grow and develop our housing here and for the community, one of the things we're lacking oftentimes is that assessment. And I'm really happy and I'm really excited to see the results. I know that's something we haven't had access to before, so this is a really big project. And I thank you for all the work that you're doing to get that done. Especially, you know, looking forward to the reports when we get to see where we're going to go in the future, what we need. So thank you.
I'd like to add on to that. It's my understanding also that having that housing assessment is going to help us get some other grants. So it's going to be a tool for us in our toolbox to help incentivize and help get other funding sources around to help get more housing in our area.
Anything, Barbara? Anything else to go? In that case, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.